Marine City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Okay, now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you ready to get a roll call, please?
Fisher Bryson.
Here.
Fisher Hendrick.
Here.
Fisher Clausen.
Here.
Fisher May.
Here.
Fisher O'Brien. Fisher Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Brien?
So moved, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under number four, approve of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we're on to public comment, this is a time for public comment, any member of the public may address the City Commission on any topic. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and be heard. No commissioner, department head, or city staff will respond. The City Manager will follow up on public comments as necessary. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please direct all your comments to me as the chair. Please refrain from use of profanity, and please do not direct any comments to any other members of the public. Does anybody have anything for public comment? Okay, here you see none, then we're going to move on to approval of the minutes.
So much so?
The City Commission meeting minutes of November 6th, 2025. I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of, the meeting of November 6th of 2025.
So moved, support.
Any discussion?
Um, I just have one thing. On, um... Page is it? This is page three, under Utility Billing Payment Arrangement Discussion. I'm not sure what the first sentence means. It says, "City Manager Reeves spoke on the upcoming water and sewer rate increases, and them being substantial bringing upon a concern that it could take residents some time to adjust to increased utility bills." I think that was a little unclear, maybe when they were editing it got messed up, I know that happens. So, I just, it's, I don't know if it's wrong or not, it's just a little unclear of what it's saying.
Seems grammatically awkward, we can clean that up.
Yeah.
Although at times I'm grammatically awkward, so it could be actually verbatim.
I don't think so, I don't remember that, I would've said, "What?" Anyway, maybe just clean it up a little, so. Other than that, I'm fine.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Under B, we have the City Commission closed session meeting minutes under number six, 2025.
Make a motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under seven, for the consent agenda, we have seven A, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, B, the Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, C, the Zoning Board of Appeals July 9th, 2025 Meeting Minutes, D, the 300 Broadway Town Hall Meeting Minutes of October 21st, 2025, E, the Ordnance Review Committee Meeting Minutes of September 11th, 2025, F, the Ordnance Review Committee Meeting Minutes of September 25th, 2025, G, the Pension Board Meeting Minutes of July 22nd, 2025, and H, the Pension Board Retiree Healthcare Minutes of July 22nd, 2025. I have a motion to present, to approve the consent agenda items A through H as presented.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, letters A through H. Support.
Okay, and get a roll call, please.
Fisher Bryson.
Yes.
Fisher Hendrick.
Yes.
Fisher Clausen.
Yes.
Fisher May.
Yes.
Fisher Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, under eight, items removed from consent agenda, there were none. Onto nine, A, under Financial Business, expenditures including payroll of $879,837.66. Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures including payroll in that amount of $879,837.66?
Make a motion to approve expenditures including payroll for $879,837.66. Support.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On the preliminary financial statements, I have a motion to receive and file preliminary financial statements for the period ending October 31st, 2025.
I'll make a motion, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. See Resolution 24-2025, that's a special assessment, assessment for delinquent accounts related to blight enforcement. And then just one thing, I, I've mentioned a note on that, is that I've seen that a lot less than it has been in previous years, and I think that has to do a lot with our city administration and the city attorney going out their willingness to work with people and resolve the problems with voluntary compliance and reduction in those amounts, so thank you guys for that.
Thank you. I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 024-2025. Support.
Any other discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Fisher Clausen.
Yes.
Fisher May.
Yes.
Fisher Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Fisher Bryson.
Yes.
Fisher Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, onto 10, for unfinished business, we have 10A, that's the Public Hearing on Water and Sewer Rates. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on the water and sewer rates. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Public hearing has now been declared open at 7:06 PM. There will be no board member comment during the public hearing. And actually, we're going to start the public hearing, we have the Michigan Rural Water Association, Matt and Joe here, and they're going to do a quick presentation of information that they've been giving to us kind of all along in this process.
Let's see if this works this way. Everybody remember the trick? There we go. Looks like it. My computer's seeing it. My computer's seeing it. I don't know why it's not going.
Where's the nearest eighth grader when you have a computer problem? I just, computers drive me nuts. It just never, it just never, I, I love it, but it's just, there's always a issue.
I don't remember. See, my computer's picking it up, like I've got a monitor hooked, but it's, the TVs aren't getting it. There we go.
That's why, it's because there's snow on it.
All right. Okay, so, my name's Joe Van Damlo, and I work for Michigan Rural Water Association, my coworker Matt Lumber sitting in the audience there. We are a nonprofit funded by USDA and EPA to provide free technical assistance to rural municipalities for water and wastewater needs. So, and that's where we were contacted to do a rate study at no cost to the city to provide the service. It's part of our normal kind of run-of-the-mill job that we do, part of our job duties that we can do. So with that, I'll, I'll get started in on the, on the presentation real quick. I'm going to go through this really fast, because I know at least everybody up front has seen this a couple times now. So, I'll do a quick recap on what goes into the rates and show you guys what, you know, the program says should be the new water and sewer rates if we get done with this. All right, so... All right, so first of all, we start with how many customers you have and what the current rates are. Okay, your guys' rates right now, you have a base charge or a ready-to-serve charge based on meter size, along with a commodity charge for every thousand gallons of water sold. That's the prices, whoops, per meter. There in the column on the left, the 788 is the price per, per thousand. On top of that, there's also a dollar twenty for city customers, there's a dollar twenty commodity charge for the current loan payment that is being made right now. And then there were a number of other fees, admin fee, drinking water monitoring fee, that with this rate study are going to be lumped into one ready-to-serve. So instead of having all the different individual little fees attached to your bill, everything is just going to be included in the ready-to-serve charge. Meter equivalents is a ratio on how we, what we use to calculate what the meter charge is going to be for bigger meter customers, and that's the explanation here. The, the table, or the column in yellow there is the meter equivalents for Marine City at this point in time. And essentially what it means, whatever the meter equivalent is, like a four-inch meter, the meter equivalent's 10.09. Simply take whatever the three-quarter inch charge is, multiply it by 10.09, that's what the four-inch rate is. Okay, those meter equivalents got changed to an industry standard, the AWWA industry standard for meter equivalents. Because the previous equivalents, they didn't match either a size equivalent table or a AWWA's table. So in order to bring them up to kind of just an industry standard, we picked a, the decision was made to go with the AWWA standard here, okay? So now the new four-inch multiplier will be 16.67 instead of 10.09 like it was. After that, we got to know how much water is actually used, been sold to the customers, and that's where we get this data here. We look at previous five years of data to try to estimate what's going to be sold in the next year. Because this rate study is based off of the next budget year. You set your budget, figure out what your expenses are, and then set the rates to meet those budgetary needs. All right, so we take a look at past historical data to, in order to decide the number. The last, the trend has been kind of downward in the last five years with water sales. So the decision was made to kind of use the minimum amount of water in any of the three, any of the five years, because every single year the water usage has been getting less and less. Last year's Cotreville water was due to a large main break, it was kind of an anomaly in the, in the data here. Before that, it was very consistent, right around the same as just last year, was abnormally high, but not normally that much. So the rates aren't based off of that higher number. Next, take a look at all the expenses, this is just a, just kind of a snapshot of part of the expenses. It's definitely not all of them, there's three different departments that have expenses for the water system that have to be factored into the rate program. And then we take a look at your guys' loans, the current loan that you have and the new DWSRF loan both play a factor in your rates, and this is the, the section where we take those into account. After that, every rate study, you have to collect enough money to meet general, normal operating expenses. Keep the lights on, electricity bill, pay the electricity bill, pay labor expense, all that good stuff. But you also have to plan ahead for future equipment replacement. The pumps, motors, everything in the water and wastewater side of things is extremely expensive. When those pumps and that equipment needs to be replaced, it's got to be done quickly. State requirements require redundancy, they require working equipment, and you can't just have broken equipment for years on end trying to save money for it. So, we use this part of the rate study to calculate an annual amount that needs to be saved, so that when a piece of equipment needs to be replaced, there should be money in the water fund in order to replace that equipment. They don't have to try to go find a loan, or have to go six months without a working pump before they can find the money or find somebody, you know, cheap enough to do it. This, kind of like if, at your own house, this is your furnace, your refrigerator, it's your water heater. Ideally, if they broke, you ideally like to have the money in the savings account, where you could go replace them the next day. Water and sewer, not only is it a want, but in a lot of situations, it's an actual requirement that they get replaced as quickly as possible. So, this is where we kind of build that funding, because some years there's no big equipment expenses, other years there's a lot. Instead of having kind of a seesaw up and down to your rates, we use this to kind of calculate how much annual savings will need to be saved, so that say in 20 years, there's $50,000 to replace the pump that needs to be replaced every 20 years. That being said, there was, I think on the water side, two full lists of equipment, because with a full treatment plant, you guys, there's a lot of equipment in order to treat the drinking water here in the, in the city. With that being said, kind of creates a running balance. So, we pick a number paid through by rates that'll go aside in the bank, and so every year, when there's an expense that needs to be made, there should be money in the bank, okay? And that's, but we use this sheet to kind of help establish what that reserve funding should be, what it has to be annually. Next, we take a look at any of the capital improvement projects. Now, you guys, ton of work going on in town this summer, last summer, there's been a lot of work done, but there's still unfortunately, a lot of work still left to be done. So I think another third or half of the distribution system that still needs significant work done on it. Okay, so that's where all these projects come here. Very similarly to equipment, it's what the project is, when the plan is to get it done, and how much it's going to cost. And then try to figure out how much of it is going to be paid for through rates versus loans or grants, okay? And in this case, like we use 25% of the total projected project cost to try to be funded through ratepayers. The other 75% of all these projects to be funded either with grants or loans at the time when the, when the projects need to be done. The difference between this and equipment is that this is your, I need to remodel my kitchen, or I need to add a bedroom onto my house. Like you might've just had twins, you might need that extra space. But hey, right now they're little, we can deal with it right now, we're going to take a little bit of time, we're going to save some money. Maybe we can pay for the whole thing, maybe we can pay for part of it, and then we'll get a loan for the other part. You can be a little bit more flexible on when the project actually gets done. So that's why we kind of break it out separate from the equipment, okay? And that's, again, just another reserve funding part of the equation to this. In order to kind of save up enough money to fund 25% of these projects, on the water side, it's about $250,000 annually from ratepayers, okay? Again, this is not to fund 100% of the projects, this is 25% of the projects. The other 75%, more than likely, the vast majority of that will probably be loans. Hopefully, you guys will, you know, qualify for some grant funding like you did with the current project that's going on. But that's a bunch of unknown situations, so at least trying to save 25% of the upcoming projects. Once those projects are done, doesn't mean the rate necessarily go down any, it's just that 250 that's going to, in the bank to be set aside to pay for it with cash is then going to get turned into probably loan payment for the additional financing for the other 75% of the projects. And with that, leads us to a final conclusion. This is more of a, like a snapshot of a detailed breakdown for three-quarter inch customers. Got a couple more slides, I'll show what all the larger meter customer charges would be. But it breaks out for all the, the equipment and maintenance, just the O and M. Standard operating procedures and expenses is almost a million dollars in expenses for that, with another 153 for the old loan that's, that's there. And these two slides kind of break down individually, like where the rate increase goes, like which parts of the ready-to-serve and the commodity are used, how much of them are used for each one of those different categories. And then, this is the, what the rate program says the rate should be. This is for all the customers, three-quarter inch customers, ready-to-serve from 1783 up to 5201. Now, in this slide, it also looks like the commodity charge is going to go from 788 to a 908. For city customers though, remember there was that dollar twenty commodity charge for the current loan? That's lumped in, that's 788 plus a dollar twenty is 908. So in all honesty, your commodity rate isn't going to go up with this rate increase. The rate increase is going on the ready-to-serve only at this point in time. And that's to ensure financially that the, the city is on a little bit firmer ground financially. Because your commodity was so high and your ready-to-serve was so low, most of the revenue collected from customers was coming from commodity, which can vary. You know, if you get one big customer that goes out of business, for say, so your, your financial situation's not quite as stable when you're getting most of your, the vast majority of your revenue, and at the, currently I think it's almost 90% of the revenue is coming from commodity, and only 10% from ready-to-serve. Hence the decision to put the increase on ready-to-serve, not on commodity at this point in time. So again, this is just the, the breakdown of summary of what the rate program says the new rate should be. Again, this is just one big, this is a PowerPoint presentation, but the slides come from our Excel spreadsheet. This is one big giant math problem. We input the data, and the program spits out what the answer is when it's all said and done. You want to know kind of what your typical customer bill might be? This is, just kind of gives a snapshot. It's 12,000 because you guys bill quarterly, you don't bill monthly, you bill quarterly. The average usage for a residential house nationwide is about 4,000 gallons of water usage every single month. So that's where you get that middle category, but if you are curious what your bill might look like if this is, if this rate increase is approved, you know, kind of find your usage here on the chart in the yellow column here, and slide over to where the new bill would be, to see what your new bill charge would be. With that, let's see, I got some, just some extra slides that don't pertain to this. So... Well, maybe they do. Multiple unit accounts. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that, this does pertain to this presentation. The other thing that was brought up is the new DWSRF loan that you guys have is a separate fee on everybody's water bill right now. So it's not included in this rate study because it's already at a separate fee. But that fee uses multiple unit accounts, apartments, duplexes, triplexes, instead of charging by the meter size, charges by the number of REUs instead. Going to that type of structure for the rates, change it from, it's like currently three-quarter inches is 5201. If you do the multiple unit version of the rates, same as the current DWSRF loan is set up for, the new rate is, it would be 4910 instead of 52 and some change like it was, okay? With your typical customer bill looking like this, it's a little bit of a, almost three-dollar savings from what the other scenario was. Is there any questions? I don't know, are we, are we doing questions right now, or do you want me to do sewer first and then open it up? Okay, sounds good. All right, give me one second to pull up the sewer. All right, so this discussion will go a little bit quicker than the water side, okay? Because the slides are exactly the same, the explanation of the slides are exactly the same. But the water and sewer rates days have to be done in two different studies, because the financial requirements, the expenses, the revenue needed to run the water and system and the sewer system are totally completely different. It's different departments in the budget, there's a water fund and a sewer fund, okay? So we break the rate study out. Same exact Excel program, same explanation for all this information that goes into it, just different numbers, different data, this is all the sewer data. Okay, so again, number of customers, current number of customers, what the current rate is. And again, this rate scenario also kind of lumps in all those fees that are on your bill currently, just lumping them into one ready-to-serve. Just a little bit cleaner on the bill, won't be as many separate fees for everything. We look at water invoiced, or in this case sewer invoiced, the budgetary expenses. In this case, we do some non-sales income. The water side, there were no non-sales income. Non-sales income is income other than your commodity charge of the ready-to-serve. This is interest on money in the bank, it's late fees, it's bounce check fees. If you had a cellphone tower on your water tower, and that rental revenue would be non-sales income. Cotreville Township is charged differently for sewer than it is for water. So the 150,000 of non-sales income is actually Cotreville's sewer bill, or roughly their sewer bill annually. That, that revenue is getting factored into the rate study to help keep the rates a little bit lower. On the water side, Cotreville was still taken into account, but they're billed one and a half times the city rate only on the water that is sold to them. So it's billed a little bit differently. They're, they were both taken into account in the rate study, the water was too, it's just in a different way. So we had to show the revenue in a different form in the study. Again, we take a look at the equipment list for wastewater, the capital improvement needs for wastewater, okay, to get kind of what needs to be collected annually to make sure that they're funded. And then, again, same final analysis for the sewer rates as there was for the water. And this is the detailed breakdown for sewer. And we'll get to the summary page here. Again, showing what all the different rate increases for all the different sized meters would be, okay, if this was approved. And again, on the sewer side, the meter equivalents were changed, same as the water. So both water and sewer have the same meter equivalent. It's an established industry standard that's used across the country for setting them. And the decision was made to use both for these studies for water and wastewater, so they were both billed the same. Typical customer bill, and again, this is with your, your current, kind of current rate structure. And then, again, the discussion was with the multiple unit accounts, same as the DWSRF, the new loan was. And this is what the rates should be if, you added that, basically adding the multiple unit accounts adds customers to the total customer count. So it allows for a little bit less of an increase. And again, this would be the proposed increase for sewer with multiple units, billed by the number of units, not by meter size. And that's pretty much, I get typical customer bill for that, and that's the end of the sewer presentation. So at this point in time, if anybody's got any question, I don't know how you guys work it, but I'm more than happy to answer whatever questions anybody has at this point in time.
So if we have questions, if you don't mind, you can come back up, and we'll let the public now participate in the public hearings.
I'll leave the computer up, just in case I get a reference back to something, but yeah.
Thank you. Any member of the public that'd like to get up and speak?
Let's just review if you use 12,000 gallons.
Sir?
Can you go to the podium?
Sir?
Sir.
I'm sorry, could you go to the podium, so everyone can hear, thank you.
I get to go up here?
Yes, sir.
You want me to face him or you?
You can just speak to us.
Byron Green.
Yeah, face us and then we'll have...
Byron Green, I'm just curious, if you want to review, 12,000 gallon use is the average customer per month?
12,000 per quarter.
Per quarter.
4,000 per month.
So did I read it right, there's no sewer increase, but there's a water increase?
There's an increase for both, both increases on ready-to-serve. Water and sewer.
So how do you, how do you get a printout of what you presented here?
You can, I guess.
So the... It's on our webpage. The...
It's on the webpage.
It'll be on our webpage, you can have...
Oh, okay, great, great.
Be available, I was going to give you that information a little bit.
All right, and one other question. How do you compare water quality between townships, say, East China, Marine City, Ira Township, Algonac? How do you access water quality?
There's reports. The state has...
We have a water quality report that you can have.
Okay.
That's also on the website, we're also mandated by the state of Michigan. And they're available for them and us, yeah.
Does, then who, then who is it on the commission that, if anybody, I don't know, who is assigned to look at the different qua, water quality reports from the different townships and see if there's any anomalies that should be questioned? Like a difference in content, chemicals in the water, and what the makeup of that is.
Yeah, go ahead. Probably answer that.
Okay.
So...
I'm done after that, should I sit down?
Thank you, sir.
Good question. Okay, so, the annual report they're talking to is called the Consumer Confidence Report. Every single municipality that provides water needs to submit a consumer confidence report and provide it to all their customers. Nowadays, with technology being what it is, I don't know for sure, but if you wanted to look at the water quality report or the consumer confidence report for other townships or municipalities around this area, most municipalities are putting them on their website. If they're not available on their website, you could probably reach out to their, either township, city office, whatever the case might be, and say, "Hey, I'm just, I'm interested in getting a copy of your consumer confidence report." I, I don't foresee any major issues with that, with them giving you that information, because it's available to all their public. They actually have to provide it to all of their customers. So I doubt anybody would really say anything about giving it to some, another municipality or a different type of customer. On that water quality report gives all whatever chemical contaminants, or what, any contaminants that are in the drinking water... contaminants that are in the drinking water would be listed in that table. Also gives you information on like what the maximum contaminant level is, like the unsafe level of any contaminant. There's some contaminants at very low amounts aren't harmful to us, but if you get too much of them, then they become harmful. Some things are beneficial to us at low doses as in not in others. Copper's a prime example of that. So our bodies need copper, but if you get too much, then it can start creating problems. Then there's other things like lead and arsenic that there is no level that's safe for us in our drinking water. But all those annual reports should give all those, they have to list in all those reports what the chemical contaminants at whatever level they are. If, if they have any contaminant whatsoever in the drinking water, they have to list how much of it it is and what it is on that annual report. That'd be the quick, easy way to get any of that information. And then the other part of the question is like who kind of looks and compares? There's not really a comparison made between municipalities or different drinking water systems, but there are minimum state requirements, health requirements, that's where we get like those maximum contaminant levels from, that are set by EPA and the state of Michigan, um, to determine what those safe limits are and what's acceptable. So there, there's nobody that really does a comparison from municipality to municipality. But there are minimum requirements when it comes to the amount of contaminants that can be in your water, what types of things can be in the water, how much testing needs to be done on it. And every municipality in the state has to abide by those same requirements by law. So if you're looking for concerns as to like problems with it, it'd be if a system got a violation for something, that would be a violation of one of the drinking water rules. Sometimes they're just, hey, we forgot to turn a report in, up to major violations for like extreme health concerns and stuff like that. That information should also, will also be included in that annual consumer confidence report or the water quality report, depending on who you talk to, those kind of, the names are kind of used interchangeably. Did that answer your question?
Well, that makes me have more questions, but I'm not going to break them up now.
Okay, any other questions?
Is your question, what is our water quality?
Yes, do I need to come up there and answer a question?
No, I was just curious, are you, you're saying a comparison or, or are you looking to say, are we, do we have good water? Is that, is that what?
Depends on who you ask and what the standards are. And I have some knowledge of other townships and the quality of the water there, which is what we have, because they have access to the data. And it just raises interesting questions.
So, so our data, we test multiple times a day and submit it to Eagle, who's responsible to gather that. Eagle would automatically flag, um, our submittals if they determined there was a problem or we reported anything that would be a, a problem. When somebody complains of an issue, we take those water, that water and do additional testing, submit that to Eagle as well, as do other townships or any municipalities that have those water plants. So the state of Michigan is the one that monitors for the most part Eagle and the EPA in terms of water quality. We have not had a water quality issue in Marine City. As far as I am aware, we produce a very, uh, what they call a very good product of water.
Yeah. And I could say, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I'm not implying.
No, 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 I'm just letting you know. And, and no, and we're very transparent in terms of, uh, information and reports or anything like that. It's public.
So a lot of, you'll see some of this on the, on the consumer confidence reports, but you guys have what's called fully treated water. Your surface water is your source, okay? The water's pulled out of the St. Clair River for, that's your source water. Um, because it's a source water and not a groundwater source, it's much more subject to contamination, okay? So because of that, the water plant is much more robust than it would be for, if you look up other municipalities around here, especially any that are off of the lake or off of the river, if they're a groundwater system, the requirements are pretty similar for the level of contaminants that are allowed and things like that. But the amount of treatment that needs to be done before that water is sent to the public is vastly different between a groundwater system and a surface water system. There's a lot more testing requirements for a surface water system. And typically, surface water systems have much, much better water quality than groundwater systems. Groundwater systems are usually track full, they have a lot of iron, possible manganese, usually extremely hard water. Surface water has virtually, is going to have no iron. It's soft water, so you don't need softeners usually. And because of the additional filtering that has to happen with any surface water plant, and the additional treatment, additional testing, the requirements in, in the, the bar is set a lot higher for all the sampling requirements that, that need to be done and the filtering requirements that need to be done. That's part of why your guys' expenses are a little bit higher than maybe some other municipalities in the area, because surface water is more expensive to treat. But the water quality that you get from that plant is a much higher level in most cases than it would be from any other groundwater system.
Because of treatment.
Because of the level of treatment that has to be done.
The standard reports allow.
Yeah, the standard of the contaminants, that's equal across the board, okay? There are additional testing requirements and additional contaminants when you're dealing with source water that have to be monitored. So there, there's even more sampling done in a surface water plant, like here, than there is in a groundwater system. But yeah, the, the level of the contaminants, that doesn't change, but the, the sampling and the filtering requirements and the treatment requirements for a surface water plant are much, 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 much higher and much more ro, more robust than they are for a groundwater system. Groundwater is usually pretty safe from contaminants. It's very deep underground, it's got dirt layers to protect that water from contamination. Surface water's not the case. Anybody can dump anything into the river and it could get sucked up into the plant. So because of that, surface water plants have got a very high level of treatment and a lot of sampling requirements. Typically, like I said, surface water plants provide a very, very high quality water coming out of the plant. Now, if you have some other water quality issues, those can be caused by distribution system issues and very old aged infrastructure can lead to a few more like issues with rust circulation, things like that, that might get, it might get you a little rusty water just because of the old distribution system. But I can tell you for a fact, you're, the water coming out of the water treatment plant is fantastic.
That was great.
And our reports are on our website.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. The public hearing has closed at seven thirty-seven PM. Onto B, ordinance twenty-five dash zero four, the water sewer rates, second reading and adoption.
Mayor, may I make just a couple comments before?
Absolutely.
We go to that process. I want to go back over, um, the process we used and why we're here and, and what has gone on. I want to make sure that everybody understands that we're very, have been very transparent in this entire process. This is a process that's been going on for the last seven or eight months, and there's been multiple presentations at several board meetings. The process started when the state of Michigan flagged our audit, when they realized that our water and sewer funds did not have the type of funding that's required to support the infrastructure. And I'm going to talk about infrastructure in a minute. So that's what started the process, where the state said, hey, you've got a structural problem in your funding, you're not charging enough in your water and sewer rates. And with that, they alerted us to the Michigan Rural Water Association, a professional organization, to assist us in this process. So we brought them in about almost eight months ago now, and they started this long process. Couple of things we wanted to do is, uh, and I, I'm only speaking from my knowledge, other people may have, uh, a longer memory or historical knowledge of what's gone in the city. I don't know that there's ever been a outside professional review of our water and sewer rates and how they were set and how to go about it and that type of thing. I think at times it may have been done by staff members or, or others or, or in the budget process, I, I can't speak to that. But we started the review and started supplying data, minutes, bills, budgets, uh, all kinds of documentation. These guys spoke with plant operators, engineers, they reviewed all of our CIP reports, capital improvement reports, they reviewed our administrative consent order issued to us from Eagle on the water plant renovation. They, uh, looked at the violations we've received from the state of Michigan for the wastewater treatment plant. They've looked at, uh, a number of different things, and then they combed through numerous years of budget material from top to bottom. In addition to that, there were multiple work sessions with city staff and the city attorneys, so we could better understand the process. There were work sessions individually with each one of the commissioners, so they could understand the process and what was going on. Again, multiple pro forma reviews where we looked at multiple different formulas in terms of water and sewer rates. We hosted a town hall meeting. We've changed our meetings to being live for better communications with the citizens. We've done every, we, we've put it out on social media. We've done everything we can to be transparent with the community. So, um, this has not been a process that was born last night or overnight. It's been an ongoing process that have been available to everybody. And if you go on our website, you look at the minutes and you look at the material, it's all there. The goals from this commission to the administrative staff was keep the commodity cost for residents the number one priority. Do what you can, whatever you can do to keep the commodity cost, and commodity is something that you can control. You can control, to some extent, the amount of water that you use. Well, you know, you don't water the lawn, you, you wait for the natural way or use a rain barrel. You don't take a twenty minute shower, you cut it to ten. Uh, and we could go on and on. You take care of that running toilet or that leaky faucet. Those type of things help cut the commodity in, on your end. Reality is that we worked very hard with the Michigan Rural Water Association people to keep the co, commodity costs stable. One of the things they didn't bring up in this presentation, but they've brought up in other presentations, and we've asked, where did we rate with our water rate structure prior to taking this over? We are in the bottom third of the state, approximately. And I'm, I'm paraphrasing here a little bit. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Probably more about ten percent.
Ten percent. And where are we at now? I think we're still below the fifty percent mark. I think we're, we're still very reasonable in terms of water and sewer rates with what's proposed. So the number one thing from the commission was do whatever you can to limit the impact on commodity charges to the citizens. We've tried to do that. The problem this city has, and I'm, I'm very candid with this, is you have end of life aged infrastructure. You have infrastructure that is done. It, it's to the point of failure. So you have no options. There's no options for you to say, well, we can put this off ten to fifteen years and we can do this and this and this. I'm working under administrative consent order from the state on the water plant, that's under renovation. I'm working under violations from the state on the wastewater treatment plant, we're working on those issues. We're working on the infrastructure in the ground. We picked up a, a twenty-four million dollar loan grant process for a third of the city's water mains. We received funding again for eight point three million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant for next year. We're working on additional funding. We've asked for grants and states for the loan, for, uh, for loans for infrastructure. We've asked for federal earmarks for infrastructure. We're doing everything we can to try to defer the cost of that infrastructure. The infrastructure's not going to wait. So the choice is, very candidly, don't do anything. And I hate to say, that's been a choice in the past here. We just chose not to do anything to allow for short-term stability, but long-term stability came to the door. And now it's failure. You turn your water on, does it produce quality water? Does the distribution center rot it away? I'll be happy to show people pipes that were oak, I'll show you pipes that had tree tunk stuck in it and wrapped in lead, that's what's holding our system together. I'll show you pipes, a ten-foot section of pipe, we've had four repairs in ten feet. I mean, that type of infrastructure is what we're facing here. My concern is it could be catastrophic if we don't start addressing the issue. So, um, one of the things we did over the last seven, eight months is that we use professional standards that we could have something to compare to, so that we have a apples-to-apples comparison in terms of how we go forward. No other options available on the infrastructure. We're doing it as much as we can. It's like an elephant. We're not trying to gobble it down, we're eating it one bite at a time. At times, we're drinking out of that fire hose, all right? It, it's coming fast and furious. We have to start somewhere. And the start of this is building the infrastructure up and repairing the infrastructure piece by piece. And how do you do that? It's with the ready to serve piece of the water and sewer rates. That's what pays for your long-term infrastructure. That's what pays for the plant operations. That what, that's what pays for us to fix things. I hope to open up the water plant and the wastewater plant for public inspection soon. I think it would be fascinating, uh, for the citizens to come and take a look at what, how water's treated, or, or take a look at the wastewater plant. Now, some people may not find that interesting. I understand it. Bring some Vaseline for your nose or something, but I want you to look at the infrastructure that's there and some of the issues that you'll be able to see with your own eyes. Most of the equipment there is not off the shelf. You can't buy that somewhere. It has to be manufactured. Sometimes it takes twenty-two months to manufacture a clarifier arm in order to install it in a wastewater treatment plant. We have those type of things failing on a regular basis, and we put in place patches or loops in order to continue running. We're at the point that we can't do that any further. So what I'm saying is that there are other communities that are in the same boat, and I think these gentlemen would tell you, they go all over the state. There's other communities that have it far worse than us. But I don't worry about those communities, I worry about our people. I'll tell you that everything we've done is available on our website. We're very transparent in terms of all the documents. I'm willing to share whatever you want to know about how we went through this entire process and how we set the rates. I think we're very competitive in terms of, um, what we're making available to our residential and our commercial customers. It's not an apples-to-apples to community to community. And I think a lot of people like to do that, they like to say, well, X community has these rates and Y community has here. Well, we'll just go buy our water from Y community because they're cheaper. Okay? Put the infrastructure in the ground in order to get the water from point A to point M, and then see if that price is the same. They, they just don't understand that it's never an apples-to-apples comparison. We're forward planning now in this community. In the past, there wasn't a lot of that. I'll, I'll be candid. We're forward planning. We're trying to now plan three, five, ten, fifteen years down the road. It's unfortunate when you talk about infrastructure that it kind of skipped a generation or so because our, some of us and maybe our, our fathers, uh, put that infrastructure into the ground, and it's been there eighty years, ninety years. So it kind of skipped a generation. Now somebody else will have to pay for it, and they don't understand that concept. They just think it, they, nobody sees it until the toilet doesn't flush or the water doesn't flow, right? So, uh, it's a hard thing to swallow for, for residents and businesses. But I'll, I'll tell you that we worked very hard at, um, trying to make sure that these were right-sized, they're reasonable, and they meet our current needs. Planning forward, we plan in bringing back the Michigan Rural Water Association, ongoing for the next three to five years, to make sure that we're on pace and we're, we're, we're not charging too much, we're not charging too, too little, that we're on, and we're not going to put the city in this bind again somewhere down the line, um, that all of a sudden they'll need a rather large increase. So if I can answer any more questions for the board or offer any more information, I'd be happy to. I appreciate the board has been very attentive to this. You've attended all the sessions, you've listed these people, you've asked a lot of questions. I've heard your direction in terms of the citizens in trying to contain these costs. Uh, we've done all we can, but we're at that point. I don't find any joy in bringing this to your attention, but there's no other options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I wanted to clarify one thing that was said, uh, when, when you quickly went through the rate being charged to Cochraville, you just, you simply said, we're just charging them one point five times our rate. The real, the real answer there is the one point five makes up for all the ready to serve. So what we did on that issue, in case there's questions in the community, is we assigned that a multiplier that made their rate even with the citizens of our that a multiplier that made their rate even with the citizens of our community, so nobody was getting more or less. You and I spent an inordinate amount of time coming to those conclusions and that math. We had a conference room full of papers and geniuses on that side of the table, but we did come up with a number that equated the Marine City rate to the Cotreville rate just in a different way.
Could you, one thing I always, no, people don't understand about these funds is how they have to pay for themselves. Years ago, they used to try to supplement it with the general fund, which was not proper. But people, I don't think, understand that these funds, you have to take enough money to pay for those services.
They have to be self-sufficient on their own.
Well, you have a legal obligation to make your community whole for services provided. And in this case, these services, you have to charge enough to make the city whole for the services extended to the community.
Yes, yes, they're a little different. And I can tell you, being that I've been going in these for years, nobody has done it. I mean, every time the rate increases, they were always, you know, 2% to 4%. Nobody ever could technically explain how that was calculated. It was just whatever. And then the ready-to-serv fees should have been added on a lot more years ago, and they just weren't. It was ignored and wasn't put on there. And our infrastructure was, you know, not taken care of. So it's really a shame that it's come there, but I appreciate all the work because until you got here, you know, you finally brought it all, you grabbed the bow by the horns and you brought it all to us with all the information, did all the research. It's now a whole package, not just, you know what I mean?
Well, thank you, but it's the staff.
Yes, everybody.
The DPW people, the, these guys, that's the, they realize that, and very candid, the state saying you have a problem that you'll need to address quickly.
Yeah. And there isn't a person on this board that wants to have to increase to these levels, but again.
I was always open and still am open
Correct.
to other options.
Yes.
Well, and then Mike took time to assemble all the right components at our meeting.
Yes.
You know, Jason showed up with his math, and the treasurer showed up with numbers, and I showed up with
Yeah.
legal theories, and Mike showed up with reality, and these guys showed up with very, very things that I didn't understand. And literally, the one meeting, we were locked in a room all at one big table, and it was, it was a hodgepodge of thinking to the point, I think at one point I just circulated a piece of paper, and I said, let's, let's see, let's, everyone guess on this, and then we'll see what the real number is. And it was, it got to be total math, and these guys were fantastic.
Yeah.
And with a lot of good input, it was, it was a great learning experience.
All right. And with that, I think I have the motion to approve ordinance 25-004 regarding water and sewer rates for the second reading and adoption.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-004 for second reading and adoption.
Support.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11 for new business. We have 11A, the MDOT performance resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to tie this with also the second piece of this. So we were looking into attempting to make the crosswalk safer at Ward. In M29, there was a recent accident there involving a pedestrian, a juvenile. And as I've discussed with you before, that's a state roadway, and there's a significant number of what the state calls warrants in order to qualify for different types of crosswalks. Obviously, what I'd like to see is a hawks crossing there. There's been a history of single, traffic signals put in and then taken out, put it back in, taken back out. So we're trying to start the whole process over, and the first piece of this would be approval of this resolution that allows us to go into the permitting process and then place traffic enforcement signage on a state highway. And if you went through the information that provided, you'll see that there's a, I call it a lane marker, but you've seen them in other communities. St. Clair has an arm of them, Port Huron has an arm of them, and they're little signage that are set on a spring-loaded type thing, if you will, and it indicates that there's a crosswalk approaching and that you have to yield to the upcoming crosswalk. We take them out in the wintertime. I know that doesn't seem to be, meet with a year-round safety thought process, but the snowplows and other vehicles tend to pick them off at a regular basis if you leave them, and they can become a hazard, but we'll reinstall them seasonally as one available. And that is the first step that we'll take in order to try to make that crossing area safer. I am trying to work with the state in terms of meeting the warrants required, because I know once we open the Guy Community Center with all the improvements we're going to make, I'm expecting a great deal more pedestrian traffic at that point, but it's a process. So this is the first step in that process, and that's how that was born in reaction to the community's concern and our concern for making that a safer intersection.
Will they only let you do the one? Or because, I mean, we have the two lights, and we have another one in between, so will they only allow the one?
They give specific instructions on where it can and cannot go.
Okay.
We're going to start, we're going to put two up, one on either side, so the north or south of the intersection has to be so many feet south of the crosswalk or north of the crosswalk. The state is very particular in terms of they have to prove the location, and they come out and re-measure it and everything like that. And as we see this one go, then we'll move on to another intersection that has issues.
Okay, because I know like the one at Chartier, I mean, that's a route for the kids to go to that, the elementary school. So they kind of take the three routes, depending on what part of the city they're coming from.
I am aware of that. We're going to start with Ward and then Ward south.
We have to get in the game.
Yes, I know, I know.
With this process.
I think I have a motion to approve the MDOT performance resolution from municipalities as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, under 11B, under new business, we have board vacancy announcements, and we currently have vacancies on the zoning board of appeals. We have one vacancy. Dangerous building board, one vacancy. And our board of review, we have two vacancies. And if anybody's interested in applying for those, please turn in application to the city clerk's office by Wednesday, December 3, 2025, at 4 o'clock PM. And now on to 12 for administrative reports. We have 12A for the city attorney report.
I'm good this evening, thank you.
Thank you. The city manager?
I've set it up tonight, thank you.
And thank you for all that you said. Appreciate it. And then we have reports from department heads. We have a couple of department heads tonight. We have Fire Chief Langster.
I don't know if you.
Awesome. Very nice. Thank you. Court Bell?
I have nothing this evening, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay. Then on to Commissioner privilege, we're liaison reports. We have Commissioner Clausen.
Well, as you know, the 25th is going to be our Santa parade. Starts at 7 o'clock. And so it's a good time, but watch out for the kids because they just, they just run out on the road. I mean, especially when Santa comes, they just surround the truck and the car and his ride, and so it's crazy. So, but just watch out for the kids, and we do have the police doing the intersections. And we are doing hot chocolate and cookies, and it's free.
Very nice. Commissioner Bryson.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner May?
I would just like to encourage all of the citizens again to please take the time to go to the website, and you don't even have to do a deep dive. You just, you just look over the minutes and all the information that's been provided. Much like City Manager Reeves mentioned, this was not an easy process, and I've been through a lot of different processes where you try to figure out the best way to come to it, and I've never seen a group of people so detail-oriented in bringing back the information and, you know, transparency. He said that a lot today. If any of you have had the opportunity to interact with anybody in the staff or in the office up there, they're incredibly easy to deal with. Mike has the knowledge to explain stuff. I'm a paramedic for a living. I don't, I turn my water on, and I'm thankful. I don't, how it gets from point A to point B, I don't care, but these guys do, and the information that they've been able to give has been, has been really helpful. So I would encourage you to tell your neighbors, to tell, you know, whoever, to please go to the website and look that information up or to contact us if you have any questions. And again, to thank all of the city workers for everything that they've put into this to get us to this point, because if we didn't do this now, it was not going to be good. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Rourke?
I'd just like to encourage people to look at the vacancies for the different boards and to think about applying because it's a great way to put your comments in, you know, the running of the city. If you're sitting at home yelling, why did they do that? You have a chance to be on a board and say yes or no and give your comment. So it's a really good way, local government is a really good place to show your citizenship. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
All right, Old Newsboy stuff. The craft show is this weekend out at the Perch Point Conservation Club. It'll be from 10 to 4. We have lots and lots of stuff out there, plus a lot of extra baskets, and there's all sorts of stuff to win out there, so. And we'll have hot dogs and hot chocolate and all sorts of stuff there, too. So everybody will be working that. And then we have the parade. As Commissioner Clausen said, there are still time. If anybody wants to get into it, they just contact Andrea Schenk or get ahold of me. I'll get you to her, but she'll sign you up, even if it's the night of the parade. We'll take you in. Lineup is at 6 PM at the church, and then we start at 7 and we go. So, and then the deadline, too, for sign up for the Old Newsboys for the kids in the Marine City Area Fire District is December 1. That's getting close. So if you need help, please get ahold of one of us, myself, or anybody. If you don't know an Old Newsboy, get ahold of me, and I'll get you in touch with the person. And it's also been posted on the Facebook page for Old Newsboys. All the information is there. Sign up, we'll get you the help that you need because it's getting there. It's coming fast. And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Just piggyback real quick on a couple of things, like Commissioner May said. Please, if anybody has any questions about the process, any of the documents, paperwork, please go to our website. We have everything available there. Contact city staff. Be more than happy to get you any information. Thank you to Joe and Matt. As we talked about, the Michigan Rural Water Association, you guys came in and just work hard here, and you've studied, like City Manager said, from our, you know, books to our facilities to everything, up, down, backwards, forwards, and came out with the best solution, I think, that we could have ever come up with in working with everybody and all the city staff that helped and city attorney and the city manager, just everybody. None of us here wanted to do this, if we had any other choices, but we didn't. And like City Manager said, we're looking at critical failure in infrastructure if we didn't do this. So we'll try our best going forward with this, and hopefully everything will be great and will work out. And if anybody needs any assistance in the future water bills with the increases, we've talked about it at previous meetings, some assistance locations, and then we'll also have information available at city offices.
It's on the webpage.
Yep.
Jason, just for my, and I was remiss in my remarks, these rates do not take effect until January 1. I should have, a good thing he caught that.
Yeah, so a little bit of time to think and maybe prepare ahead and start looking. If you think you're going to need some assistance, start looking at these programs and what you have to do to get enrolled in them.
Okay.
And if we have nothing else, then?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.